Hi guys.
Yeah, get a bushel. Alrighty, Jennifer, are we ready?
Sure are, you can go ahead.
Okay, welcome to the January 17th, 2025 City Council Work Session. It's on sanitation, rerouting and optimization. Vicki, would you like to make your introductions and take over?
Vicki Nemecek, Public Works, and our project manager is Adele, Adele, Adeley. And she's going to introduce the people at Univeris and some of our staff as well.
I'm Adele Bartel, the Public Works Staff Engineer, and we also have Austin Reiner, the sanitation manager here too. Our team from Univeris is Gus Esposito, he is the project lead, and then Brahim Ladhar, and he's the optimization tech. And I'll go ahead and let them start their presentation now.
Excellent. Hello, everyone, thank you for having us today, we're honored to be part of the City Council Meeting. So my name is Gus Esposito, I'm with Univeris Software. So just a little bit of background on Univeris, Univeris is a company that essentially is acquiring smaller companies over time to create a suite of services and software to basically offer to municipalities to solve just about any problem that they might have. Obviously, one of these issues is route optimization, and that's what we're here to talk about today. So I came from a smaller company that was purchased by Univeris in 2020 called C2 Logix. C2 Logix has been a leader in route optimization for waste services since 2000. I've been here for 11 years, 11 plus now, myself. So just to give you a little background on myself, and my coworker here, Brahim Ladhar, has a master's in Geomatics and Spatial Data Science, which effectively means he is an expert with digital mapping. So that is what his expertise and what he brings to the table. So just to give you a little high level before we jump into our slides about what route optimization is, I like to kind of lay out the definition so everyone's on the same page and understands what we're talking about. Sometimes in tech, when you throw out a term, people have their own definition of what it is in their head. So a lot of times when I say route optimization, many people think kind of Google Maps, like I'm going to the store, it's gonna drive me to the store. And in a sense, that is route optimization. But what we're really trying to do here, and for all my clients, is make custom routes for the needs that they have, specific, for the, in this case, you guys had very specific needs of going from five days to four day service and things like that. Obviously, you have a certain fleet of vehicles, certain size, certain hours a day you run, all those kinds of parameters are input into our system that we use to make the optimized routes. So these slides that are being shown on your screen, who's got the controls for those?
Gus, you can go ahead and share your screen for those who are online, and Adele is gonna move them along here in the room for us.
Okay, great, let me pop the share button here. Screen two. It'll be coming up. Okay, can you see that screen?
Yes, we can.
Let's focus to the other side, there we go. Get this out of the way, just moving the zoom controls out of the way here. A second. Okey dokey. So as I was saying before, the main goal of this project obviously is to optimize the service that you give to your constituency, that is, pick up for waste and recycling service, commercial and residential. The big challenge that the city presented it to us was moving from five days a week service to four days a week service. This is a common request that we get all the time, just depends on the customer, right? In addition to changing from five to four days, obviously, we're going to update your data to modernize it as much as possible. This includes all new customers over time that have been added in, and any removals that need to be made, any adjustments to quantities on customers or, you know, counts of bins, those types of things, right? We're gonna update all of that data, digitize it, and at the end of the project, in addition to your routes, you get that updated data back as an asset for your city as well. So how do we approach route optimization? So in general, what we're trying to do is reduce mileage and time, okay? So I can't reduce the amount of time it takes for the vehicle to actually lift a garbage bin and empty it out, all I can do is get you from those two points faster, right? Or all the points in between more quickly. That is what route optimization really truly is. So it's about minimizing kind of what we call in the industry deadheading time, which would be time spent not servicing or not picking up. These would be times like, I need to drive over this highway to get to the next subdivision I'm servicing. We want to minimize all those things as much as we can, and in addition to the in-route route optimization, another thing we focus on heavily is load optimization. So we take the capacity of the vehicles, all that into account, how much they're picking up and so forth, and we manage the runs to the transfer facility to empty out during the day as well for maximum efficiency. If you think about it, there is a few ways you could go about when your truck is getting full on the day, when is he gonna go to that transfer facility? Well, you could go, you know, full stop when he's full, but you might be on the other side of town, have to drive completely across town to that transfer facility, burning lots of mileage along the way, emptying out, and then driving back to where you were completely empty, again, burning all those miles, right? Without servicing, until you get back to that area where you're picking up again. And we're trying to minimize all these things. So it's a very complex problem, of course, we use a tool that uses a computer algorithm that helps us solve all these problems. So initially, how we start a project is basically you sit down with the team, we go over all their goals, in this case, of course, it's a five to four day in managing your fleet and things like that. We go over the parameters that are specific to you, meaning how long are your shifts? You know, things, things of that nature. Do you want to split a certain route a certain way? And effectively, we go through this long list of things, we get all of those parameters, we input them into our system, and how we go about the project from then on is, we're aiming to get 100% in that first draft set of routes that we make, but we know that it's a computer and its data, and it can only do as much as that data will allow, right? So effectively, we're aiming for 100% on that draft route. What it produces is about a 90% success rate. That last 10% needs to be a collaboration between our team and your team to give us the real world knowledge of Cheyenne that we don't have, and that's not in any data. These would be things like, I can't go right here, this street is extra narrow, and I can't fit down there with my truck, or there's low hanging power lines, stuff that's not going to be in the data that my program can't account for. It could be also just preferential things like, you know, Gus, we don't want to be in this school zone at this period of time, can we adjust the routes accordingly? Of course we can, right? So the idea again, behind route optimization, it's a complete custom to the customer to give them the most optimized, lowest time, lowest mileage that we can possibly do. Another huge advantage that this project has over other advantage is that day shift from five days to four days a week. In consolidating days, you can really gain a lot of mileage savings. So if you think about it, if you're spending five days and you're going here, here, here and here, and now that's spread out just over four days, that distance you're going to be traveling from the base is shortened, right? You'll be picking up more in a day and therefore saving tons of time. You also get to reorganize which stops go on which day in this project, right? So that allows for, again, geographic consolidation of routes, so you minimize the amount of distance between services, and that's the name of the game, and that's what we were able to do. We got fantastic results for the residential routes, making sure it's clicking through here. There we go. So the results for residential waste from a baseline, so initially what we run is your initial data set with your baseline routes, so that means your current routes that you're running. Basically, you say, okay, Gus, I have 30 routes, you know, this route does this area of town, and you give me all the stops that are serviced by that, and we run that in our tool. That way, we can compare your current routing to the optimized routing we're gonna create later, and effectively, it gives us a baseline statistics, right? That we can work off of. So the result we got from the baseline reduction was excellent in Cheyenne. It came from, down from 1,627 miles to 1,049 miles, a reduction of 578 miles. And there's actually more additional stops in the new routes because we added some new clients in. It reduced the number of routes from 30 to 24. So think about this, in reducing all those routes, you cut out all those extra miles, right? Because we're just kind of extending the routes that we already have a little bit, and it really made a tremendous reduction. This is an excellent, excellent result. Typically, we see about 20%, so this is obviously over that. So additionally, I kind of spoke to this already, but we maximize the truck's capacity to go to the transfer station mid route. So often what we see in, when a client comes to me, again, I've been doing this for over a decade now, they come to me and they say, hey, Gus, we've been, you know, growing over time, and we've been adding this subdivision to this route and that subdivision to this route, and then the next five years they're building this, and we keep adding. At the end of the 20, 30 years, it becomes kind of a big jigsaw puzzle that maybe isn't super duper efficient, and that's really what we kind of do with this whole reroute. So effectively, we're taking your whole set of stops and saying, how can we maximize this out, right? That includes that transfer station run like I was talking to, right? So effectively, instead of driving across town full, burning all those miles, emptying out, driving across town empty, burning those miles, this program will actually figure out how much load is in a day's route. So it could be one or two loads, meaning if the truck had a 10 ton capacity, let's say your routes quantity would be 15 tons, so he's going to have to go twice in that case, right? He's gonna empty out at the 10 ton mark, and then at the end of the day at the five. Now, if he's gonna go twice regardless, does it really matter if he goes at nine or packs out all the way to that 10? Well, what the program figures out basically is, the most ideal time geographically, when the, when the vehicle is nearest to the transfer facility and packed out basically 80% or more, it will send him to that transfer station to save as many miles as possible. And this does an excellent job, it also saves retracing areas of service. A lot of routes when they're designed tend to drive towards a, to transfer facility and drive back, and that causes crossover among many routes, right? This, this works to erase that. And as I said before, going from five to four days, we had to rebalance everything, right? So the, the routes are a little bit longer, but it saves, and longer in time rather, I should say, but it saves mileage over the grand scheme of the project. By the way, if anyone has any questions at any point, please stop me, happy to answer questions for you. So as we said, we put in, initially, we put in your baseline routes, so the older routes that we started with today, to get kind of a baseline statistics, and just to kind of give you the parameters that we use, and kind of the results that we got out of it. So we put 20 seconds per stop, 30 pounds per stop. Stops per route worked out on the baseline routes to be about 778. The time, average time per route is 6:59, so seven hours roughly. The longest route is 13 and a half hours, and the span from the largest to the smallest was pretty great, so in other words, a little unbalanced, right? Lacks uniformity across your fleet. And the overall number of routes, of course, was 30, and we mentioned that mileage number at 1,627. Now, I'm not gonna go over this next chart in depth, but I'll kind of just give you an idea of some of the statistics that we measure here. So these are, this is every single route. Let's just go through that top line, that 311. So you have, of course, the, the time it takes to run the whole route, the tonnage they're picking up, the number of stops and units is the same, that's just households. Mileage, they went throughout the day, the entire day. The trips, so how many trips to the transfer station they took, and the capacity, sorry about the quality of this image here, it's 10 tons. Now, on the right, we have turn breakdowns, right? So a big piece of route optimization is minimizing lefts and U-turns, and that is what is built into the algorithm of the program, right? So it knows that taking a straight and taking a right is less taxing in terms of time than a left and a U-turn. Now, the added benefit outside of time is, rights and straights are much more safe maneuvers for, for waste vehicles too. So not only are you getting an optimized route, you're getting a safer route as well. So just to give you an idea of all the statistics that we kind of opine as we go through, what I really wanted to point out to you is this bottom section. So this comes through for the whole set of routes, and it's kind of a statistical breakdown, if you will. So we have the, the averages, the means, the range, which is the, the smallest to the biggest, the sum, the total of them all, and then the min max, so it shows you the disparity there. And as you can see, there's a large range here between, that's, that's typically sign of imbalanced routes and unoptimized routes. What you want to see is a tighter window of that range, and the averages, of course, is what you want to, want to see across the board, you want it to be around that average, right? For each route to keep balance across the, the fleet. Now, it's important for a few reasons, of course, it optimizes the, what we're trying to do, lowering miles and lowering time, excuse me, but it also keeps your operations, meaning your, your drivers and operators, you know, they have a uniform shift, right? They, they know what they're getting into, and they're all gonna have something relatively the same. So it's important for that as well. So now, we're gonna get into the optimization side. So we took, again, from the five day to four day, we, excuse me, the challenges with converting to less days, are the questions are basically, how many vehicles and routes do you actually need if you're gonna do that? So we had to figure out that answer by running a couple scenarios and seeing what makes sense, right? With the time allotted. And which stop should change route and day? So, you know, we're obviously moving from five to four, so which ones are flipping to which, you know, from Monday to Tuesday and vice versa. Pardon me for just one second. So obviously, those are the challenges we faced, again, we have the same parameters that we kind of set up for the baseline here, so exact same time and wait per stop. Now, the routes are a little longer, so they include more stops, so went from 778 to 976. Our average time per route is 8:49, so just under nine hours. And the longest route is nine and a half hours, so you can see there's a lot, a tighter window of balance there. The overall number of routes is 24, and again, that mileage dropped significantly. And if we're looking at, again, we have a chart through these, you can, you can happily look through this after, if you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer, but what I wanted to point out was the range is a lot more tight in this window, right? So before it was 11 hours, now it's five. And really, one of the routes we created is a future based route that's a little short, it's meant for future growth that you're gonna have in the next few years, so it's a little light in terms of, compared to the rest. So just compare the two, put those two next to each other, right? So we went from 778 stops, seven hour routes, to 976, eight, eight hours and 50 minute routes, and obviously, we reduced from 30 routes to 24 routes, we reduced that mileage significantly by over 500 miles. So pretty excellent result. We're also working on finalizing commercial routing, compost routing for you. We don't have those numbers just yet, we're finishing that up, we're about 90% done, but these are the residential numbers, and they're excellent. So that is the end of my high level presentation, does anyone have any questions?
Okay, we'll start on the diocese first, Mr. Seagrave.
Yes, sir, thank you. I have just a few.
Yeah, absolutely.
You said we were going from 30 to 24 routes, does that mean six fewer drivers and six fewer trucks?
That's a question for the team, to how they're gonna operate it, but in general, it would be less vehicles that you would require to work and less drivers, yes.
Vicki Nemecek, Public Works, that we're going from 30 routes, which would be eight, well, six routes, five days a week, is 30 routes. We're going to six routes, four days a week, 24 routes, same number of drivers, same number of trucks.
So you're not saving anything?
Six routes.
How many, how many trucks are on a route?
One truck on a route, per route, so six trucks on, we have six trucks out there each day, picking up 976 stops each. We had six routes before, six drivers, six trucks before, we'll still continue to have six drivers, six trucks, they'll just be in, some will be in different areas.
This must be modern math, because I thought we were going from 30 to 24, but you're telling me, but you're telling me we have the same number of trucks and drivers, and there's only one truck per route.
Yes, if we go from five days a week, six routes, 30 routes, we're going to four days a week, six routes, 24 routes. They're just longer. They're just longer routes.
Okay, somebody's gonna have to explain that to me later.
Yeah, we have the same number of routes, six routes, we're just doing it four days a week instead of five.
Okay. With this program, over, let's say in five years, when we've annexed some property and built a new subdivision, do we have to, and we want to update this, do we have to redo all of this? Or with your finished product here, would it be relatively easy to update?
Yes, so the latter. So in general, the bulk of the work is done. The main chunk of the work we have to do is input data and validate data, that is the tremendously difficult part. So if you had adds, I can't imagine it would be tremendous percentage bigger than what we had to do, so it would be a small amount of stops to add, and to update that is relatively easy to do and cost effective, yep.
Okay, one more question, or actually, two more questions. Perhaps this summer, and I know there are some major road projects anticipated, how do you work that into your, into your program? Let's, as an example, Del Range is a pretty major street, there's gonna be a lot of work done on it this summer, how would you do temporary reroutes for the summer?
Certainly, so the program has the ability to basically block off a road and say, this is construction, it saves both versions of the route. So if you say your main street, I can't remember which street you said, I'm sorry, but if that's under construction for six months, you could run, you know, the construction version of all your routes during that time, and then when that period is done and the street is golden again, and you're gonna use it again, you just revert to your previous routes, and you'll have the optimized routes using that street.
That, that particular road, well, there's several I can think of that might not have a lot of individual pickups on it, but I think we would cross that road.
Right, traversal is important.
Many times during the day, it could affect numerous routes. Potentially, anyway. Overtime, since we're going to four days and 10 hours, will there be overtime involved for our employees?
Vicki Nemecek, Public Works, we will have the same number of hours, 40 hours, for each driver. The overtime will come just like it does now on a holiday, only we've changed that holiday, how holidays work, which I'll explain at the end of the, in my comments, if that's okay.
Yeah, but since we're working 10 hour days, we're not violating any hourly rules or anything like that?
No, absolutely not, through you chair. We are, will give breaks, we will give the, a lunchtime, we are not required to do that by Fair Labor Standard Act, but we do that for, in this division. Street and alley works 10 hour days, traffic works 10 hour days, the, they are just, the, not all of our workers will move to 10 hours, we still have some commercial routes that will be running five days a week or six days a week when we include Saturday. So there, there will continue to be overtime, but we hope in fact that it will be less overtime because of the holiday schedule.
Thank you.
Okay, any further questions?
Just to ask about chair through you, tell me one more time what the fifth column is in, in the route, it's right after the U-turns.
Say it again, I'm sorry?
The, the fifth column in the turn analysis?
Oh, yes. So we have straights, lefts, rights, U-turns, and the last one is dead end in U-turns. Typically, this will be a cul-de-sac or a little street that dead ends, you have no choice but to turn around. Those are less penalized in the program than a regular U-turn, which would be in the middle of a street or at the end of a subdivision kind of thing where there's no, like, that's the end of Cheyenne and you have to turn back kind of thing, it's the end of the border.
Okay, well, I do notice that in the first graph compared to the second graph, we reduce U-turns by a considerable amount, but the dead ends increases. And so I happen to live in a cul-de-sac, there's two cul-de-sacs in our subdivision, 170 houses, seven houses in each cul-de-sac, and as I'm out there mowing the lawn and just observing the trucks coming through the cul-de-sac, it takes them about as much time to take care of those 14 houses as it does the other 154. So I don't know if it's been thought of that, like what the postal service does where it's consolidated on one corner, that they could just come by and take care of all seven houses in one whack. I don't know if we've thought about doing something like that, or even how many cul-de-sacs we have in Cheyenne?
Vicki Nemecek, Public Works, actually, Austin and Craig and I have discussed moving all of the containers to a specific place so they can come and pick up all the containers at one location. It also keeps them from having to turn into small, in small cul-de-sacs where they can't actually make a full U, a full turn without backing.
Oh, I thought it was my idea, okay. And then, what's our average? Miles per gallon, I know it's, it would be different if it's loaded or empty.
I don't have that calculation right in front of me right now, I can do that with a set.
Seven miles per gallon.
We believe that it's around six or seven if, without having any numbers in front of us, but we believe that's correct.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I think that is all I have for now.
Okay, anything, anything from Dr. Aldridge?
Thank you, Vice President Reibel, I did have a couple of questions. I also am interested and curious about the staffing solution, so I'm just curious as to what the response has been from employees about going from a five day work week to a four day work week, and from eight hour days to 10 hour days.
Vicki Nemecek, Public Works, through you chair, that was one of the things that before we got started, we talked to all of the employees, we had one employee out of all of the drivers that said they were not interested in going to tens, and we accommodated that employee.
Okay, I also was curious, this 578 miles, is that per day that we're going to save? Per route or in total, in route? It looks like in total routes, that we're saving that 578, is that per day?
It's overall.
So we're just gonna save 578 miles in a year's time from all of our route changes?
A week.
A week, okay, great, that's what I needed to find out. The other question that I had was, when you did this analysis, did you estimate this on picking containers up in alleyways or in the front of houses to maximize? I'm looking at a average stop time of 20 seconds, but I'm thinking about the number of individuals, I believe, last time I checked, it was, we had over 100 individuals who are receiving assistance with their garbage containers, and I am anticipating many more if we end up moving these containers all to the front yard, to the front streets. So where, how did, where were these containers when you did your, this is really, in logic, this is known as a postman problem, because the postal service uses this in logic and logistics to set up their routes, their mail routes. So how, how are you, what did you use as a location for garbage containers? So how, how are you, what did you use as a location for garbage containers for all of these, uh, calculations?
Sure. So based on the data we received, some of them were in alleys and some of them were in the front. In general, we can move them to either, uh, as long as the road is accessible, uh, and the vehicles are okayed to go down that alley. If it's an alley that the city told us you can't go down, that can't be included, and they would be included, uh, the, the can would be located either in the front or the side, or whatever the closest street is for that. Um, but in general, it can do both. Uh, and if you have walk-up service needed, like a senior citizen or something that needs help, those were included as well. So we added additional time for those individual stops.
So the, the data you used, uh, excuse, sorry, Vice President Rebel, the data you used, um, for this was provided to you by, uh, the sanitation department. So I'm, guess I'm wondering, um, if the sanitation department can tell us, is this based on the, uh, is this based on the changes, uh, to where bins are being, the new, uh, locations that people have been notified about recently?
Vicky Nemetschek Public Works, this is actual, uh, pickups, where we were making them, that was, that was what we gave them, was where we were actually picking them up. All of the ones that are, uh, have been moved to the street were included as moved to the street.
Okay. And, um, the last question I had was, um, Vice President Rebel, through you, is, as we're planning this, I did have a constituent, a reach out to me from Ward Two, who asked, what prompted this, um, study or this optimization look? Was it simply because we have, uh, new properties through annexation, and we were looking, uh, to maximize our routes and add those locations in, which is what my best guess was, but I just wanted, I said that I would ask that question today.
Vicky Nemetschek, through you, Chair. Yes, that's correct. Our primary goal was to optimize the service that we provide so that we could continue to provide the service using the same resources, so the same number of, uh, trucks, the same, uh, dri-, number of drivers, the same number of administrators, so that we did not have to, in fact, grow what, uh, we currently have.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Councilman Leiborn, do you have any questions?
He stayed muted. Um, I do have, um-
He's not muted anymore. Yes, well, I have a, a number of, uh, interest in this matter, and I look forward to, uh, seeing what specifically comes out of it, particularly the question of alley collection. As I understand it, from what I'm hearing, if alleys, certainly in Ward One, we have, uh, that's the way we built the city, and if we have adequate, uh, safety factors in those alleys, um, and when they come pick up mine, they move right along and they know what they're doing, then if that's the case, and I believe that's what I heard here, was that if there was, uh, adequate, uh, spatial area in the alley, and obviously, we have a lot of, uh, utility work in our alleys here in this neighborhood, that that service will be continued. How can I, uh, determine which neighborhoods and areas are going to, uh, continue to have the existing alley service without moving to the street?
Vicky Nemetschek, through you, Chair, to Mr. Leiborn. Um, right now, the optimization is not changing the location of any containers. So if your container is picked up currently in the alley, it will stay in the alley. If your container is picked up in the street, it will remain picked up in the street. I will, though, be, just to be transparent, let you know that we are considering looking at, uh, moving forward with a, cons-, hiring a consultant to look at what we could do to better service our alley customers, and what it might cost, uh, as opposed to picking up on the street, and what, uh, recommendations they would make.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, that's interesting to know, and I believe in our past discussions of this matter, we've noted that from time to time, uh, there needs to be attention paid to those alleys in terms of, uh, either trees or, uh, people that, uh, encroach on that right away. Um, and that is, is a important point in this discussion, so are we thinking that we're going to be, uh, as we look at this analyzation of, uh, specific collection space, are we going to be looking at, um, making sure that those alleys are, uh, clearly accessible for that driver? I, we've, we've had this discussion in the past, and I guess it's just the reality of, uh, city living, that some people in some alleys, uh, get pretty crowded. I hope we'll take a look at that, but, uh, I want to thank you, Mr. Chairman, for, uh, asking for my opinion. That's, uh, thank you, that's all my questions.
Thank you, Councilman. Um, any further questions?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, um, I have a question about safety with the ten-hour, uh, going to the ten-hour days. Will you be tracking the differences between accidents, either physical or with trucks, now, ask, or, you know, in the past compared to going forward?
Vicky Nemetschek Public Works, through you, Chair. Yes, um, we continue to track incidents and accidents on a daily basis, so that, uh, that data will be available, yes.
Okay. Any further questions or comments from committee? Mr. Escobillo?
Okay, thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. I'm doing my rough math over here, uh, just on the, the miles, if you average it for three dollars per gallon or save a ninety, ninety thousand a year, uh, what other savings are we getting? Because we're using the same amount of employees, same amount of trucks.
This, Vicky Nemetschek, through you, Chair. The savings are primarily in, some in money, but the majority in time, because if we, the issue comes down to how many drivers can we hire? Not how many trucks can we buy, because we can buy as many trucks as we need, but our challenge is always about driving, about getting drivers. So we have perpetually three to six vacant positions all, at all times, and we have for decades. Um, more during COVID, it was significantly higher. Our partner with, partnership with L triple C, which for the new council members, the city pays L triple C, and the worker, the driver works and is paid while they're training, and then they sign a two-year contract that says they have to stay with the city for two years, or they have to pay back, uh, either all or a portion, depending on how long they've been here, to the city for that CDL training. Um, we, the, hiring more drivers, um, is not always possible. We have high competition for CDL drivers in this area and every area. So that's a, that's a tough one to, to deal with. So what we're trying to do is make sure that we can do the most with what we have. So that, that's what, uh, our competition really is with, for CDL drivers. So we, we do our best to hire and retain drivers as best we can, but that's, again, looking into the future is a, is a challenge, and will continue to be. And Craig Lavoy may have some additional comments.
If I may, uh, losing all that extra mileage also saves wear and tear on the vehicle tremendously, and also, uh, garbage trucks are heavy. It saves some wear and tear on your roads as well.
Craig Lavoy, Public Works, I'd also add, it, it's less oil changes, less mechanic time, less replacement costs you're gonna see, um, Monday, or Tuesday for finance. I believe two side arms costed five hundred and fifty thousand apiece. So that's a dual-arm truck that we probably have to replace less often, we run those less miles.
And, Mr. Chair, follow, what's our starting pay for someone's CDL train?
Vicky Nemetschek, through you, Chair. Our annual starting pay for a CDL driver, um, is approximately, it's between forty and forty-one thousand dollars.
Does that include benefits?
No, it does not.
Plus benefits.
Plus benefits, okay. Anything else, Mr. Escobillo?
Uh, nothing else right now, Mr. Chair.
Jennifer, you have, someone has a hand up?
I have Dr. Aldrich.
Dr. Aldrich.
Thank you, Vice President Rebel. Um, I am just curious if, um, anyone can tell me how many, um, individuals have gone through the CDL program in the last year? The last time I visited with L triple C, they said they hadn't seen anyone from the city for a couple of years. So is that, um, are we, have we just had, reached our, um, number that we needed and we haven't had to put anybody through that program recently? It, or is it that we haven't had any attrition? I'm just curious about that.
Vicky Nemetschek, through you, Chair. The, uh, we have, I believe, uh, CRE put, was planning to put a couple of drivers through, but, um, we've put, probably over the last year, is my, if my recollection is, we've done a couple of transit, uh, drivers with the CDLC with, uh, um, passenger endorsement, and we've had five through the sanitation division. Um, we are using that. Um, we do try to keep, we try not to put them into the program until we are convinced that they're gonna be able to do the job and stay. Um, so we, we would hopefully have them complete their probation periods before we put them through the process, in sanitation, anyway. We can't do that in transit, but we can do it in sanitation. Street and alley has had a few drivers go through as well, um, upgrading from A, from Bs to As, um, that has been in the last two years, if I'm not mistaken. And we've had a few drivers also go through, maybe, maybe two or three from street and alley that have gone through the CDL program. The, um, we try to hire, if we can, people who have CDLs. Um, it's not always possible, and then when we have good employees that prove that they want to be there and will come to work, and, uh, uh, we will put them through the program if they choose.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Any further questions from committee? Okay, hearing that, uh, if you would like to, to, your closing comments?
Yes, thank you. First, I'd like to thank Univeris and Adele Bartel for, uh, putting this work session together. I think everybody got a lot of information, including me, about what we're doing. Um, the change, moving to the four tens, will take effect the first of February for residential customers. We did mail out a letter to all residential customers on January fifteenth, so if you haven't checked your mail recently, it's probably in there. I think Craig and I said we got ours on Wednesday. Um, so look at that, it will tell you if you have moved to a different day. So make sure that you do, read that, and recall, remember that, if your day changed, your time probably also changed. So make sure you get those containers out there by six AM as required, especially for the, the start, when you don't know what time they're gonna be coming by. Um, there will be a second letter that will go out for only those people whose days did change. So you can expect that in the mail as well, but you'll already know what your day is if you got the first letter and read it. Um, I also wanted to talk about the improved holiday pickup schedule. The holiday pickup will be completely different. Right now, we have a system where if your, uh, pickup is on a Monday or a Tuesday, then you move to the Saturday before, which has always been a problem, because people forget, and then we drive around the neighborhoods with nothing to pick up, and then, then the next week, it's double pickup. So that has always caused a problem. If it's Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, it would move to the following Saturday. Again, people forget when it's on Saturday. So what we're moving to is called a slide schedule. And what that means is if your pickup is on a Monday, your pickup will instead be on Tuesday. It will slide to Tuesday. Tuesday will slide to Wednesday, Wednesday will slide to Thursday, and Thursday will slide to Friday, which will be, our, our routes will be driver, drivers will be driving on overtime, but they will get their Monday holiday. So the slide schedule means that instead of trying to remember to go put your cans out on Saturday, you'll only have to leave your can out there if you put it on the wrong day, and they'll pick it up the next day. So I think that's a huge improvement, and we've heard from other, uh, municipalities that have done this, that it was one of the, uh, that it was very well-received. So we're looking forward to that, and I think our employees will, um, enjoy that as well, because we won't have those double pickup days like we do now. Um, again, I've already talked about our biggest challenge of, um, hiring and retaining drivers. Um, the thing I want to stress is that we must op-, optimize our service in order to continue to serve this growing community. Efficient service is critical for our future, so that we can continue to do what our customers want, um, and still do it with the resources that we have and in a, at a reasonable cost. I'd like to thank you for your time, and I, if you have any other questions, I'm happy to answer.
You got, Mr. Escobillo?
Okay, Mr. Chair, through you. What's our contamination rate on recycling?
I would have to look into that and get back to you. Our-
I think last time I asked, it was like thirty-five percent.
It, uh, I would have to look at the bills. I haven't, um, I haven't looked at the individual bills recently, so let me look into that, and I'll, I'll, uh, get that information to all the council members.
Okay, and then, follow-up, Mr. Chair. Um, when the Wyoming winds kick up and then the, the can blows over, do the, the drivers actually get out of the truck and pick it back up?
Uh, Vic, Vicky Nemetschek, through you, Chair. The requirement in the ordinance is that you control your waste until it is picked up and in our truck. We will do some, but we're not gonna chase garbage down the street.
Right.
So we, we do what's reasonable, I would, I would say that that's a, that we do what's reasonable.
And then, um, I think Craig, we talked about this once before, about looking at new technologies where there's kind of a slip lock on the lid that, the, once, once it's flipped upside down, the weight of the trash opens it up, but the wind can't.
Craig Lavoy, Public Works, Chairman, through you. Yes, we do provide a locking lid for a charge if the customer wants it. They are not, there's no technology that seems to work right, and it's dumb technology, so it's just by elevation and, and it's a rubber mechanism. So if, if someone wants one, they can request one, but some people don't want them, so that's why it's a charge for extra.
So we might have to look at mandating it, requiring it, money, right?
Uh, Vicky Nemetschek, through you, Chair. That, the item itself is about seven or eight dollars. Um, the whole, it always comes down to how much is it worth to have a container that will lock like that? And, uh, you know, we could probably buy one for two hundred dollars, that, get somebody to make one, but the fact is, is that that's not worth, that's not economical, doesn't make any sense. So, uh, what I would recommend, and what I do myself, is when it's windy out, really windy, like it's gonna be in the next couple of days, just don't put your container out. And we'll, you can bring your, we'll, we'll allow people to bring it to the transfer station in that situation and drop it off without charge, their recycle. Now, their garbage, garbage is required to be bagged. Garbage is required to be bagged and should not be fall, uh, blowing down the street. So if it's your garbage, we'll charge it for it if we have to pick it up.
Okay. Jennifer, who do we have?
Mr. Chairman, Dr. Rini.
Dr. Rini.
Hi. I have just a question on, on, um, the sliding days. That makes sense on a, with a federal holiday where the day is on Monday? If we have an instance like Christmas and New Year's this year where, um, the holiday is on, in the middle of the week, as on Wednesday, then is it only the Thursday, Friday pickup, or Thursday, Friday pickups is slight, or what happens in that event?
Vicky Nemetschek, yeah. Vicky Nemecek, yes, Dr. Rini, that is exactly right. It would only, the holiday starts the slide schedule. So if the holiday, the 4th of July, for example, we're on a Wednesday, Wednesday slides to Thursday, Thursday slides to Friday. If we have two days, we would end up picking up on Saturday. That would be in the case of, I think, next year or this year, the Christmas Eve and Christmas are on Wednesday and Thursday, if I'm not mistaken. So they would shift to Friday and Saturday.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any further comments or questions from committee? Anything else, Ms. Nemecek? No? Okay. In that case, no further business, we're adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.